Montgomery County's population is quickly approaching the 1 million mark. It's estimated close to a quarter of that number are residents under the age of 18. When it comes to making decisions that affect the lives of those residents, the familiar way is adults talking to other adults. For years, the Montgomery County Council has taken its show on the road to hear the concerns of citizens in its town hall style meetings. But this town hall meeting, council members are poised to hear from the youth of our county and what concerns them the most. The council has many important decisions it will be making in the coming months, many of which will have a direct impact on people 18 and under. From recreation to libraries to parks, the council is going beyond the classroom to find out what quality of life issues are on the minds of the younger generation.
Welcome, everybody, to Rockville, Maryland, to the county council office building, and we are here for a live county council youth town hall meeting. We have lots of students here in our audience who are here to ask questions to the council members about issues that are on their minds. But first, I want to turn it over to council president Roger Berliner for some opening remarks.
Good evening. One more time. Guys, this is a special night for us. All of us up here meet with our constituents all the time, and we have conversations, really, with your parents all the time. But this is a night that we set aside to hear from you, your perspective on things that matter to you, because, quite frankly, we need our county to work for you. We're pretty proud of the quality of life in Montgomery County, and I think your parents chose to live here and choose to live here because we've got a pretty nice place. But we can always make improvements. And, again, we need it to be a place where you thrive, where you learn, where you learn all the things you need to learn, and where you have fun, where you enjoy nature, where you enjoy each other, where you grow in a way that makes it so that you want to come back to Montgomery County afterwards. So, really, this is your night. We will listen to you, and the way we'll do this tonight is that I'm going to limit my colleagues. Two of us will respond to any one question that you have, so that we can get through more questions, because otherwise, all of us would answer one question, and we might get through two questions. So hopefully, we can get through a few more. So what I'd first like to do is turn to each of my -- let my colleagues introduce themselves, let them tell you where they live, the communities they represent, and the responsibilities they have on the county council. Let me start with the far right. Mr. Rice?
Thank you very much, council president. My name is Craig Rice. I'm a council member representing the counsel, Montgomery County's second district that starts as far down as Montgomery Village, goes up through North Potomac, as well as Germantown, up through Clarksburg, Damascus, all the way up to the Frederick County border. And, brand new to the council, well, I shouldn't say "brand new," two years in, so we on the ends, both Hans Reamer and I call ourselves the Young Guns, and we kind of surround the rest of the council. But they keep reminding us, we're not so young anymore. I keep forgetting that. But it's a pleasure to be here tonight and look forward to hearing your questions and comments.
Hey, guys. My name's Nancy Florine. I'm one of the at-large members. There are four at-large members, and there are five district members who represent different parts of the county. I've been on the council for 10 years now, and I live in the little town of Garrett Park, but as I said, I represent everybody, and I chair the committee that has to do with land use and development, and economic development as well. And I sit on the committee that deals with transportation and the environment. So I hope you've got a lot of questions for us.
Hello, everybody. I'm Phil Andrews. I'm the council member from this part of the county, the Rockville Gaithersburg area, including parts of North Potomac, parts of Durwood, Washington Grove, Aspen Hill, Flower Valley, and Leisure World. And I went to some of the schools that some of you may have gone to or go to, Oakland Terrace, Newport Junior High, when it was a junior high, and Einstein High School. I chair the Public Safety Committee of the county council. I've served on the council since 1998, and I also serve on the Education Committee.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Nowarro. I am currently the vice president of the council, and I represent District Four, which covers everywhere from Wheaton, Colesville, Glenmont, Sandy Spring, Olney, parts of Aspen Hill, Leightonsville. And I've been on the council since 2009. I chaired the Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee, and I sit in the Health and Human Services Committee. I also served for five years on the Montgomery County Board of Education, and I welcome you this evening, and I look forward to your questions.
In addition to having the privilege of serving as president of the council, I'm chairman of the Transportation, Infrastructure, Energy, and Environment Committee. I represent the good people of Chevy Chase, Bethesda, Potomac, Poolsville, and Kensington. And I also serve on the Public Safety Committee.
My name's Valerie Irvin. I represent District Five on the council, which includes Silver Spring, Tacoma Park, all of the East County, all the way up to Burtonsville, which is at the Howard County line. And I've been on the council since 2006. I chair the council's education committee. I see a lot of people from Silver Spring here tonight. Welcome. I'm looking forward to your questions.
I think I represent the senior side of the council. I'm Mark Elrich. I'm an at-large council member. I represent the entire county. I have grandchildren who are older than some of you. I taught at Rolling Terrace Elementary School until 2006, when I got elected to the council here. I serve on the Planning, Housing, and Economic Development Committee, and on the Public Safety Committee, and I look forward to hearing from you.
My name's Hans Reamer, and I'm one of the four at-large county council members. I represent the whole county. I live in Tacoma Park near Montgomery College. I've got two young boys, aged five and almost two. Before I came to the county council, I worked for Rock the Vote, and I also worked for President Obama on youth voter mobilization. So I spent a lot of my career working to empower younger voices in our political process, and I'm very excited to see you here tonight.
And let me just say, I've got another colleague, George Leventhal, who's running late but should be here shortly. Ms. Kennedy, it's your turn.
It's our turn now, but before we get started, if you're watching this show live on October 10th, we are tweeting. We are taking your tweets here tonight, live. #MocoYouth. So if you can't be here tonight, and you have a question for the council members, #MocoYouth, and we'll be getting those questions on the air as we get them in. Okay, so we have our first question right here, so if you'd stand right up, sir, and introduce yourself.
All right. My name is John Manis. I'm currently a senior attending Northwest High School in Germantown, Maryland, and I'm serving as this year's student member on the Board of Education.
Congratulations. Do you have a question for the council?
I do have a question. So I want to start off by thanking you guys for helping to organize this forum, and also for the good number of students who came out here today. I know a lot of work has been done on your part in publicizing it, and I think it definitely shows from the interest of a lot of my peers who've come out here. My question kind of ties in with a little bit of what you might have heard in past years from student members. My predecessor, Alan Shea, who came out last year, brought up the budget, and it seems to be kind of a common theme, I guess, from board members to continue to question this from the council. So the way that I'm going to go ahead and tie this in, in past years, I think it was actually last year, we had brought up the issue of the budget and the way in which it ties in with the decisions that you make as a council. And I believe that a statement was made saying that the importance of the budget is more important in the way that it's allocated within the Board of Education, as opposed to the amount of money that the county council chooses to appropriate to the board. So what my question is, is kind of twofold, and the first is, how will you continue to ensure that you have a commitment to public education? What are current steps that you're taking now to demonstrate this? And the second thing is, do you think that previous actions in relation to the budget and other actions in relation to our school system have changed the culture between the Board of Education and the county council? And just to kind of commentate a little bit on your feelings about that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll have our Education Committee Chair, Ms. Irvin, be the first responder.
Thank you very much for the question. I'm sure all of my colleagues would love to go right down the row here and respond to that. I'll begin by saying I also served on the Board of Education, and I got into politics because I was a parent advocate. I have two sons that went all the way through Montgomery County public schools, and graduated, both of them, from Blair High School, and went on to the University of New Mexi -- oh, New Mexico, University of Maryland. I used to live in New Mexico. But anyway, your question is a good one, and I think that there's a lot of confusion, not only among those of you who might be in the audience today, but your parents, and your neighbors, and taxpayers in general. We in Montgomery County are extraordinarily proud of our commitment to public education. As a matter of fact, we have done so well by public schools in Montgomery County that we are probably in the top four or five in the nation in terms of our per pupil spending. So our taxpayers believe in a great public school system, and all of the members of this county council also agree that it is probably one of the top priorities for all of us sitting here at this dais. Let me just say that moving forward to the next year, we know that there are going to be more challenges. We've had the worst financial disaster in the country, starting in 2007, and we're just beginning to come out of it slowly, but we think that there's some light at the end of the tunnel. But until that happens, we all are going to have to make very tough decisions, and we would hope that we will be able to work with you as a student board member and your colleagues on the Board of Education, because it really is their responsibility to determine where those dollars get spent. This council is very proud that we have been able to write the check, and that check goes to the Board of Education, and they determine how every penny of that money will be spent. And so I'll stop there, because we could go deeper into the weeds, but I don't think that we need to. But your question really underscores what all of us here believe very firmly, that public education, especially here in Montgomery County, is our stamp, and we're known across the country, and we have been, I believe, the reason why the state of Maryland has been number one in education in the country for four years in a row.
Mr. Andrews?
Well, thank you for your question, and thanks for serving as a student member of the board. That is a very important position, and you deserve a lot of commendation for taking on that responsibility. Every member of this body has had children in the public school system, or, in Mr. Reamer's case, is about to. They already, perhaps kindergarten already, I'm not sure, but we all believe in public schools. How the money is allocated is a critical thing to understand. And there is a difference between maintenance of spending and maintenance of effort, and whether money that is given to the school board is allocated for class size reductions or staffing increases or pay raises is a choice that the Board of Education makes. In the last year, the board decided to give two pay raises and did not restore most of the cuts in salary and staffing that had been made, or the reduction in funding for class size. So the board has choices to make, and $16 million, for example, would have allowed the board to restore the class size ratio that had been in place. It went up by one two years ago. The board chose to give a second pay raise instead. So there are choices that each organization makes, and I hope that we will have the opportunity to be in sync in the next year on this, because we all believe very much in public education. But we have to make sure the money is going where it can make the most difference for students.
I could just ask one really, really quick follow-up to that, kind of in light of a couple of statements that were made. I know that there's definitely reports going around, and I've heard this from students, and I'm sure you've all have seen this circulating around in press as well, in regards to the loss of approximately 10% of local funding within the allocation to the MCPS budget over the last 10 years, actually starting before the 2009 recession. So that'll be my last kind of interjection, if you could just respond to that briefly.
Sure. Yeah, we had a cut of 25% in the library budget just two years ago. Parking planning was reduced 15%. So if you look at how education compared to other areas of the government that we fund, and we have to balance the funding for police and fire and rescue, and the schools, and all the other services that people need, you'll find that the school system continued to do well. And when you add in the state increases, almost all the state increases in spending went for education, almost all the state cuts were in other areas, which made it much more difficult for us to keep funding for police, fire, and libraries at a satisfactory level.
And the president will take the last word, which is, our county council, over the course of the last decade, exceeded maintenance of effort by approximately $600 million. This is not a county that stints when it comes to education.
Thank you so much for your responses.
Okay, young man. This young man is here on a scout assignment. Dawson, tell us your last name.
My last name is Metzger Fleetwood.
And where do you go to school?
I go to school at Washington Water School. It's about an hour drive from where I live. I chose it because it's a really nice private school, and it's got a different education plan. I won't go into that.
So you're a Montgomery County resident, though?
Yes. I live in the 20904 area code in that area, in Snowdon's Mill, and for the past 10 years, me and my family have had to rake 2,200 pounds, literally, of leaves, and bag it and dump it. I already spoke to this, about this, to council member Rice, and he said he would go into it and get back to me, but I just thought I'd bring it up in front of all of you. In my old neighborhood, people would come in, you know, those big trucks that would suck up leaves from the side of the road, so you would only have to rake the leaves to the edge of the road, and they would suck it up and dump it. But we need to bag it and dump it, which is not easy. You have to pick up all those leaves. But I'm wondering why they don't come to our part of the neighborhood.
I will turn it over to Mr. Rice. I'll just say that when I was your age and had to rake, my father told me, "It builds character." That's why. I didn't like that answer either. Mr. Rice?
Well, let me just say this, that I think that some budgetary cuts that might have come in may have affected, I think that overall, when we're looking at the service to our community, there are a lot of things that we used to be able to do, that we used to be able to fund, that unfortunately, we've had to make difficult budget choices. You heard about some of the cuts to education, some of the cuts to libraries, police, fire, all of those things in recent years. But I think that that's something that I want, and I told you I wanted to follow up and find out exactly what happened, because I have seen some of those trucks still in some neighborhoods, and I'm not sure why they might not have been in your particular neighborhood. So I know I'm working with the district council member for your area. We'll find out an answer for you. I unfortunately don't have that information in front of me right now. I was trying to look up on my phone and see about leaf collection, in the meantime, in between when you had asked that question. But we will certainly get back to you and let you know whether or not it's something that's a permanent cut, whether schedules have changed, or if it's something that we might be able to, in fact, bring back.
Ms. Florine?
I do have a little bit more information on that kind of thing, generally. I didn't expect we'd be talking about this tonight, really. Apart from the fact that we are stuck with all those leaves, the county is divided up into different districts. Some people pay extra taxes that address leaf collection and trash collection, some don't, and it gets kind of detailed. And if you're in the homeowners association, that might also affect it. So there are a lot of different rules. Welcome to Montgomery County, and it requires some research, and I'm sure Council Member Rice will get you the exact answer. But that's the general gist of it. More urban areas pay for that service in their tax bill. Others have different choices.
Okay. Thank you for your question. I have a group of students behind me who have a series of questions for the council members, but I did forget to mention that if you do have a question, just raise your hand, and I'll get to you as quickly as I can. I'm sorry about that. We're going to let these young people introduce themselves. Tell us where you're from, where you live, and what school you go to, and address the council.
Hi, my name is Mahala, and we live in Burtonsville, Maryland. We go to Burtonsville Elementary School.
And what's your question tonight for the council?
We want to know if we can raise the stores and unemployment rates in Burtonsville, Maryland.
Okay, well, if you can look at them and tell them. You're concerned about the economy in Burtonsville. Why are you concerned about it?
Because we don't have a lot of stores, and there are very empty spaces that we really need to fill.
And do you have any suggestions? I think we've got other, do your friends here have suggestions on how we might be able to do that? Okay, so should I move on here? What's your name, young man?
My name's Miles.
Okay, and what was your question for the council?
Well, I just wanted to say that our team has an idea to raise the, to get, bring more jobs and business to Burtonsville Crossroads Neighborhood Plan by making more business, and we thought of a store that we could make, and a whole lot of people could probably shop there or buy food.
So did you all come up with this plan together, all six of you, as part of a school project? Is that what it was? Okay, and would you like to tell me, can you just step a little bit aside here so I can get your, would you like to tell me what you have to say to the council about your plan?
I would like to say how we can, like, strengthen the economy by creating more jobs, because people these days need more jobs, need more jobs, so they can pay for their food, their water, their shelter. So if you, if we could create more jobs, we can fill in the empty spaces, like she said, and we can also give people money to pay for their taxes, for their food, for their water, and for their shelter.
We might have a job for you. I think you, you guys, why don't you step up?
Opening in our Economic Development Department?
Yes, I think so.
We can talk about this.
Let me have you stand up here, please, young man. I'm not sure, we want to get a good shot of you. Go ahead and tell us your name.
My name is Noel, and we wanted to build an international food play area and movie theater for, to help, like, then going somewhere really far, then you can come to right where you live. You can buy anything that you want, and like, if you moved here just randomly and you're not used to the food, you can buy the food that you're used to, and then you can, you know, just, and then you can fill up on jobs, you know, helps with the unemployment rate and rises money for people to help, for people who are poor, who are struggling, that they can buy, they can have money and pay for their taxes and everything.
Okay, we have another one. Step up here, please, and tell us your name.
My name is Ryan. I just want to say that this would be a place where families can go and dine, play, and watch a good movie.
Okay, that sounds pretty good. Is that what you're dying to do in Burtonsville? Is that what you're, what you need over there?
Yeah.
Okay.
My name is Joshua, and I come from, I'm from, I'm from here, and I'm from, and thank you very much.
And you worked with the team on the plan. So do you all have something that you're going to give to the council, or did you, did you bring your plan along with you that you could give to them? No? Could you?
We had something to say.
Okay, well, look at them. Let's look at them and say, who wants to say? You want to say?
She starts.
Okay. Okay, what are you going to say?
I just want to say that if we get more stores, you can help the population of Montgomery County, and we can really use some more stores, like, like everyone else said.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
We appreciate that very much.
We do. Let me just, I will turn to Vice President Navarro and Mr. Elrich. Let me just say that we take very seriously our responsibility to try and create a better economy, more jobs, so that everybody can prosper and take care of their families and have fun in Montgomery County, and go to movies and go to dinner. Ms. Navarro?
Thank you very much for coming here tonight and giving us your input. I actually represented Burtonsville up until last March, and Council Member Irvin represents Burtonsville now, but I wanted to share with you that what you just described is exactly what most of the residents of the East County always talk about. And so we at the council made a decision to ask the Park and Planning Department, specifically the Planning Board, to look at what it is that Burtonsville wants. And so they have done a few meetings with a lot of community members, probably parents or neighbors that you also have, and you know what? They have said exactly what you have said. And so that's moving forward, because we have a process where first, we have to have a plan that can, then we can decide what could go there. We have had conversations, the movie theater has come up a lot in these conversations. We also have to be mindful that sometimes we have to be a little patient, because when the economy's not so good, sometimes really hard to attract stores, but we're working really, really hard to make sure that happens. We need your input, we need your participation, as you're doing, and the issue of jobs is very important for the East County. And there are some other plans in place very soon, because we take that very seriously. We don't have as many jobs in the East County, and that is critical. So I am so impressed that you have noticed the same thing. I want to ask you to continue to participate, because it's so important that you're here and that you continue to tell us, and stay tuned, but we definitely are going to take notes of what you said, and we're going to transmit it to the people that are working on some of these particular plans already. Thank you.
Mr. Elrich?
So I'd like to suggest a little community organizing project for you all. Remember the Giant Food that used to be in that shopping center that's empty? So Giant Food moved across the street, and Giant Food controls the other shopping center and has told the people who own the shopping center that they can't put another grocery store in that shopping center. And the other stores have left because the grocery store, I mean, how many of you folks go to, the parents go to those grocery stores? All of them, right? So it's all those people going to the grocery stores to bring customers to all the other businesses, and so when Giant left, those businesses lost their customers. So if you want a nice community organizing activity, go back to your schools and send a letter home to your parents, and have all your parents write letters to Giant Food, and all the schools write letters to Giant's Food, saying, "Let the owners of the shopping center rent to a grocery store so we can have the kind of community we want." It's very simple. You send letters, you let them know that you care, Giant might actually pay attention to you.
Good job, you guys. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. Good job. Okay, I'm going to move over here. I know we have some questions on the other side of the room, and I also have a tweet that we've received, so after I take a question, we'll probably have a, which one of you all had your hands up here? Tell us your name and where you live.
Hello, I am Richard Yarrow, a sophomore at Richard Montgomery High School, and I'm also an officer in the Countywide Parent Teacher Association, MCCPTA. When the MCCPTA officers went around to the local PTAs, the one very major, very, almost universal concern we heard was about technology and a lack of Promethean boards. The Montgomery County Superintendent, Dr. Starr, has since proposed his technology plan, which would require a commitment of E-Rate funding. So what are your concerns with the plan? Thank you.
First, to our Education Committee Chair.
Thank you very much. That's an excellent question. Our committee is actually going to be taking up this issue of the Promethean boards, and the superintendent has asked the council to look at funding Promethean boards out through the next five years. I think it's to the tune of about $14 million, if I'm not mistaken, and we think it's a fantastic idea to, first of all, wire up all the elementary schools in the county, and then to make sure that every one of those classrooms has a Promethean board. So we're going to be taking that up. We haven't made any decision yet, because it hasn't come before us, but I expect it will be coming to us this fall.
And Mr. Reamer, who's one of our leaders in getting us technologically savvy, because he's young, like you guys. Mr. Reamer?
Well, one of the things that I'm sure you've all experienced is that because we don't have Promethean boards in every classroom, you could have a Promethean board with one teacher one year and then not have the Promethean board the next year. And that varies from school to school, varies from various circumstances. So the problem with that is, if the school system is going to be able to maximize how they teach with Promethean boards, then they need to have the ability to implement a use uniformly. They need to say, "All second graders are going to use Promethean boards in this way. All ninth graders are going to use Promethean boards in that way." And then every teacher can work on that curriculum, but today, they can't do that. So we're not really able to capitalize on the value of the Promethean boards, because they're not implemented across the school system. So it is really important, and my, you know, seeing those tools in the classroom, it's nice to see students have the opportunity to interact with technology in a way that's not just doing the things that we think are fun, like tweeting, or Facebook, or texting, but actually research and, you know, more informational, educational uses, and I think that's really important.
Okay. Well, we are going to take a quick break, just a minute, but we'll be right back with more of our live teen town hall meeting in Rockville. Stay with us.
Hey, guys. Are you looking for a place to hang out on Friday nights? Then check out the Teen Escape Club. We meet once a month at the Youth Cafe located at the East County Community Center in Silver located at the East County Community Center in Silver Spring. So, what goes on at the Teen Escape Club? Lots of cool things. TEC's programming team is made up of high school students, so you know it's what we like. Open mic nights, poetry slams, music performances, art contests, DJs, dancing, carnivals, video tournaments, an annual talent competition, and everybody's favorite, food. At TEC, you can also learn about applying to college or even perfect your writing skills at a spoken word expo. The Teen Escape Club meets throughout the school year. To find out the exact time and dates we meet, or if you want to become a member of the TEC programming team, go to montgomerycountynd.gov/BRAD. See you at TEC.
We're back with our teen town hall meeting in Rockville, Maryland. I'm going to turn it back to Council President Roger Berliner briefly for another introduction.
And I'm going to turn to my colleague, Councilmember George Leventhal, for, give him an opportunity to introduce himself.
Greetings. I had another obligation. I apologize for being late. I'm Councilmember George Leventhal and I represent all of Montgomery County. I'm one of your at-large council members. I chair the Health and Human Services Committee, responsible for the poor, the sick, the elderly, the homeless, the mentally ill, and abused and abandoned children. Uh, I also sit on the committee that is responsible for planning where and how things are built and how we can grow our economy, the Planning, Housing, and Economic Development Committee.
Thank you. And we have received, we received an email earlier with a question from a, from a student who couldn't be here this evening. And I'd like to read that to you all and maybe you can answer their question. It's from Nancy J. Uh, she asks, "Is it true that there may be an arena built in Montgomery County so we can see big concerts here?"
I can speak to that.
Who'd like to take that?
I can. Roger?
Mr. Leventhal, he, he's ready.
Well, yeah, I've had a number of conversations. Um, it's a proposal. It's a private proposal. It would not be built with your or your family's tax dollars. Uh, the proposal as it stands right now is that it would house, um, a semi-professional basketball team and would also be available for graduations and other large events and sporting events. The proposed location is near the Shady Grove Metro. Uh, it's an investment team that they're trying to put together. So, it's a private sector proposal. It's not being done by the government.
Very good. Another question. Your name?
Hi, my name's Jacob Rains. I'm a member of the Montgomery County Junior Council. And my question is, is what is your number one goal for this school year? And how can, uh, students help you reach that goal more efficiently?
Uh, give me, give me, uh, Mr. Rice.
Well, I'm going to tell you, um, and I haven't given much thought about how, uh, other, uh, students might be able to fit into this goal. But now that you asked that question, it, it, it makes me think. One of my number one priorities is to make sure that we're addressing the achievement gap in our schools. And while that's been something that we have certainly seen a lot of progress in our school system, we want to continue to see it more, uh, that, 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 that we're reducing that achievement gap and really reaching out, uh, to students in other areas. And so, I think that, I think back to my time when I was in school and how I used to mentor and do a Saturday school program with other students. And so, if you see other kids that might be in your classroom that are struggling, at you as a part of your, your, uh, organization can certainly reach out to some of those students and assist them when it comes to tutoring and being prepared for tasks. Because, uh, teachers can't do it alone. You know, we're asking our parents and members of the community to help to step in to make sure that we uplift all of our students. And so, I really think that by you stepping up as a leader, uh, you guys could help in that effort.
Okay, great. I have a question here. If you'd like to step out, please. I don't think I can get back there.
Um, hi, my name is Shannon Jen and I am a press correspondent from John Mans. Um, recently, we've heard that the Shady Grove Bus Depot is going to possibly be changed into a commercial area. Um, what are your thoughts on this? And, uh, do you think that the economic advantages of this would outweigh the possible losses such as buses being put on school property and lots of maintenance facilities?
We have wonderful conversations about this. Planning, Planning Chair, why don't you speak to this?
Uh, I am just so delighted you guys are talking about these kinds of issues and because, uh, we need to hear from you on these subjects. Yes, there is a plan for Shady Grove. Uh, the arena, if there is one, uh, will come up through the, uh, a review process that involves that. Uh, and around the Shady Grove, the, the depot, the maintenance depot, at least the county one, is moving over to a brand-new facility that they're building right now. It's on the other side of Shady Grove Road. I hear it looks really good. A school bus, uh, facility, I think, is, is moving farther up the county. Uh, but the whole point of this, if, if you've been to the Shady Grove Metro Station, you know, it's kind of wacky. It's all cars and then it's industrial stuff. And it's not a whole, a very good community around there. So, what our job is, is to create opportunities for communities to be terrific. And our plan is, uh, for the Shady Grove area, right around the metro station, to not be just such an industrial site, uh, but to be a community where people will live, where there'll be more jobs, and there's going to be, uh, a new school and park there. And it's going to be very different from the way it's looked up until now. The, the transfer station will still stay there. But everything else, over time, is going to change and it's going to be, uh, really cool. But there's going to be a lot, you, you'll see it bit by bit evolve. But we have a whole plan where we discussed this some years ago. And that's the thing about planning. It takes a really long time for plans, like for Burtonsville and like for this, to actually become reality. Uh, it's a little frustrating, but it's really interesting when it starts to happen. So, I urge you all, uh, to pay attention. And don't, for all of us, whenever you have questions like this, do not hesitate to email any of us about this. And we can help you understand what's going on. And if you don't like it, let us know. If you like this, like it, let us know also.
Um, just to elaborate on this question based on your answer, um, am I correct in my assumption that currently around the Shady Grove Metro Station, there is a very small community or possibly no community? Or is there already an established community?
Not so, well, if you go out there, take a look around. It's mostly parking garages.
Oh, okay, and, um...
And then, and then the industrial areas, like where they repair the buses and so forth. And tho- those are all moving to other places.
And let me let Mr. Elrich, who's also a member of that committee and cares deeply about creating communities around our metros, because that's really what we're trying to do, is to build communities around our metro. Mr. Elrich.
I, I would ask you to, um, to keep an open mind on this and actually explore what's, what the options are because there's some people who think that by putting the school buses in a scattered locations, we can actually reduce the cost of providing the bus service. And for all of you who are concerned about how much money we're able to put into the school system, we have to make choices too. And if, if decentralizing the buses makes it possible for us to save money and free up dollars, that helps us do other things that make a difference to all of you in school. So, we, and, and, yeah, George makes the point of pollution too. I mean, all the buses in the county leave those depots. If the buses were located in the schools, they'd all be running shorter runs. They'd use less fuel. It would reduce the operating costs of the school system. There are pluses to this, other than the school system being upset that we're talking about changing the way people have done things for decades. Sometimes you do things for decades. It doesn't make sense to keep doing them that way. You have to look at other options.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move over here to this side because I see, I'll be back, guys. I see some hands up over here. If you come out here, please. Okay, this is a group effort? Okay. Great. Okay. Go ahead and tell us who you are and where you're from.
I'm Kian and I'm from, I go to Montgomery Blair High School. And I live in the Langley Park, Tacoma Park area. And we're here with Gandhi Brigade. Um, I have two concerns about health issues. Now, number one is school nurses. Um, I had a friend who went to the nurse's office because she cut her lip and it was bleeding. And all the nurse said, while she was on the computer, she said, "I have some Vaseline." Well, I mean, I have some Vaseline too, but you see, that didn't solve the problem. So, um, how can you ensure that students feel that they can rely on the school nurses and that they feel safe, um, when they get hurt?
Just, one of the difficult things when we have these conversations, not just with you, with your parents, is recognizing that our county council really doesn't have the control with respect to that. That that really is about the school system itself. Um, and so, let me turn to our Health Committee Chair, if he'd care to respond to that because it's, it's a fair question. It's just not one that we directly control ourselves.
The council president is almost always right.
Not right on this one.
He's one of the smartest people I know. Um, it, it does happen that the school health room staff are employees of the Department of Health and Human Services, not the school system. And it is the case that not all of the personnel in those health rooms are nurses. Um, the salaries they make, the hours they work, uh, they are not necessarily equipped with, you know, nursing degrees or certification or licenses. And sometimes they're just school health room aides. And some of them don't have the training or the certification to actually perform medical care. So, I, I don't know exactly what happened in the case of your friend. If her lip needed stitches, for example, it's possible, I'm just speculating, that the school health room attendant or even a nurse wasn't actually able to stitch up her lip under that setting and she would need to see a doctor or go to the hospital. Um, I do understand, I've got, I'm a parent of two teenage boys and they've gotten hurt in school. Um, and it is difficult sometimes because you assume that the person is really trained to provide medical care, um, and, and often they're not. And often, um, and this would fall to the school system. Uh, the school system doesn't want to get sued for, for providing inappropriate medical care. And so, what really the, the school health room becomes is a place to, to rest and to call your parents. And that, that is the policy. Not, not everyone who you think of as a nurse is actually a nurse and therefore able to provide medical care.
Do your friends have a question as well? Who would like to go next?
Um, my name is Diana Perez. I'm also from the Gandhi Brigade. Um, my question would fall under Health and Human Services. Um, I just, I was looking specifically, how can you guys, um, increase the access to healthcare for me as a college student?
Great. May I? I'm talking a lot here. I apologize.
It's a lucky thing you, uh, you, you show, yeah, you get out here.
She has one more thing she has to ask.
Right.
Oh, oh, it was just a comment, I guess. I would like to thank you all for, you know, um, being here and giving youth, like, hearing their voices and just, you know, yeah.
Great. So, I'll try to be as quick as I can. Um, first of all, I enjoy working with Gandhi Brigade. I've been out to visit Gandhi Brigade many times. And I really do think that it's all about giving young people their voices and communicating through the use of media, which is what we're doing here tonight. We're on television. And so, um, Gandhi Brigade, I really think, is a cutting-edge nonprofit that's giving young people skills they need. You're in high school now, is that right?
College.
Okay. So, does not your college offer a health plan? Because for the most part, college students, as part of their fees, get coverage at the Student Health Center. Is that not the case at your college?
Yes, but I was wondering if there's any other access or just any other areas where I can, because, hmm...
So...
I mean, yeah, you make a point, but it's not exactly affordable to me.
Ah, well, yeah, that's a challenge. I, um, the, when you enroll at Montgomery College or the University of Maryland, or I don't know where you're enrolled, where, where are you enrolled?
Montgomery College.
Right. So, your student fees pay for medical care at the Student Health Center. Um, and, and that's how it's provided. Um, the, the other great piece of recent news is that because of federal health reform, young people can now stay on their parents' plan until age twenty-six. So, that if your parents have health insurance, um, and if you need something above and beyond, you know, if you need to be hospitalized, if you need something above and beyond what the Student Health Service will pay for, your parents' plan will cover you. Um, if you'd like to contact me separately and we can talk about what specific issues you have with access to healthcare, there may be other ways I can help you. But generally, that would be my answer.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and we have one more right over here. Sir, your name?
Uh, my name is Jonathan Della Cruz. I'm currently, oh, sorry.
Yeah, there we go.
Uh, I'm currently a first-year at Montgomery College in Rockville here. And I have a question about transportation. I travel from the Wheaton area all the way up here, every morning, every afternoon, uh, to and from school. And I usually find myself taking the metro because the ride-on takes too long and because it loops around the community, I, I tend to take the metro just so I can arrive on time to class. And I was wondering if there's any way to make, uh, metro at least a little bit affordable for, uh, college students like me? Uh, because I remember back when I was in high school, uh, my ID paid for the ride-on, ride-on and metro. But now, it only works for ride-on. Uh, I know we have to pay at times, but I was wondering if it could be like some sort of discounts for our students, uh, because I have many friends in the Wheaton area who also come to Montgomery College in Rockville with me. And I have a second part to this question, which is about safety on the, on the buses because I don't know if it's my bad luck or what. I've been on very, very bad buses because I've been on drivers who have driven aggressively. Uh, I was nodding off to sleep on a ride-on bus one day and I was just shook and, like, because the bus just suddenly stopped and I looked and it's, uh, the bus almost crashed into a car that was turning, uh, right into, into a parking lot. And another case, uh, the driver just kept on honking at every single car in front of him, trying to get to the station, and I, I have no clue why. Probably he was on, on a time crunch. But I, I do see some safety issues on buses also. Uh, I tweeted to Metro, uh, because, uh, I was on, on the seat one day with my friend and we look up and the panel is off, it singes and it's just hanging there. And I found that as a big safety concern, I tweeted to Metro. Metro told me they'll take care of it. And, uh, that's all my questions for now.
Thank you. Mr. Reamer is an active member on the Transportation Committee, particularly on metro sets of issues. Mr. Reamer.
A couple of things. One of the initiatives that I'm working on relates to getting the county to do more with, uh, digital new media outreach. And like you can tweet metro directly, uh, you should be able to tweet the county's ride-ons and mention the bus that you're on. And if you have a complaint about the driver, uh, write that complaint as a tweet and then get a reply from the Department of Transportation. Uh, we are working on those kinds of issues. And I hope that that's an example of, uh, accessibility that we would be able to create for you. Uh, on the question of affordable bus transportation, one of the things that the county council did last year, uh, the initiative of Council Vice President Navarro, was we reinstated the free bus rides on the county ride-on system for high school students, uh, for students. Uh, unfortunately, it doesn't cover college students, um, but it does cover high school students. So, if you're able to ride the ride-on for free, uh, during certain hours, that's because of an action that this county council, um, took. Um, I got the details of that right, didn't I? Uh, uh... Oh, does it cover metro? Metro buses? I didn't think it did. Okay. The last thing I would say, uh, about getting from the Wheaton area to Rockville, one of the policy initiatives we're looking at is how to create bus rapid transit, which is a higher, more rapid form of bus transit. It's been Councilmember Elrich's initiative in many ways. But the council has been studying for a number of years, putting a rapid bus system from Rockville to Wheaton. And it would get you between the two, uh, locations in, you know, a very, in a, in a much shorter time than you get now. And it would be a, a better ride because it would be dedicated and hopefully you wouldn't be stuck in traffic. Um, so, we are working on ideas like that. I don't know that we can get a metro discount. That's, you know, we don't control that. I know we can't get a metro discount. How about that? But we can, um, we can make changes in our own bus, uh, operations and we're working on that.
Ms. Irvin wants to add a point.
Yeah, since I chair the council's Education Committee, the college's budget does come under our committee. Uh, and one of the things that happened this past two years is that because we were in such a tight budget crunch when the college came before us with their budget, one of the things that we were most concerned about was the cut that you guys took at the college for transportation. And I know when you go pay your, uh, your fees, that you, you just said you used to get both ride-on and metro, uh, as part of your student fees. We would like to see more Montgomery College students come before the council to testify on how important this fee is to the, to your success as a student. We hear a lot from MCCPS students during the budget, but we rarely get a chance to have interface with Montgomery College students because this, the, uh, student enrollment at the college is at an all-time high. It's got... It's got 28,000 students on three campuses, all of them landlocked, and many of your peers don't own cars, so they're, so you all are at the mercy of whatever public transit, transportation system we have in the county. As we heard from you tonight, all that, not all that great. But we can do something as legislators here to really do all that we can to support the mission of the college, and in particular, this idea to put that money back in if we can during this budget cycle. So we'd like to hear from you, beginning in January.
Thank you. One more quick question here, and then I'm going to move on.
I have a question about school lunches and how to make them healthier. There's like a lot of pizza and fries and chicken nuggets and chicken patties, which probably is not real meat. So we made one improvement, that the salad have gone from this size to this size. So how can we make school lunches healthier?
Well, I know that Ms. Irvin has also been very involved in these kinds of efforts to make sure that we all eat better.
Well, I, I'm not the only one on the dais. I know that my colleague, Councilmember Leventhal, who chairs Health and Human Services, we've been working for a long time with the school system to try to work with them on ways to improve the, the health of students and to make these school lunches tastier. We know that there are a lot of school lunches thrown away. We know a lot of students don't eat the lunches that they have prepared. So again, we don't have a lot of authority over the school system in, in terms of telling them what we would like to see them serve, but we're working with them in a collaboration to try to do all that we can to improve that. Councilmember Leventhal and I were, maybe it was a year, a year and a half ago, we're at, we were at Piney Branch Elementary School, talking about the issue of putting a dishwasher at Piney Branch Elementary School, because the students there didn't want to be served on, on the, what is it, Styrofoam trays. While we were there that night, the most interesting thing that came out of that conversation was how many students came up like you are tonight, saying how lousy the food was. And what, and most of them brought their food, and a lot of them were vegetarians. And so I think the school system is going to have to really step, step up its game, because you all are so much more in front of them in terms of what's healthy to eat. And so keep doing what you're doing with us tonight, but be more, all of you need to be advocating very, very strongly through your, your student member of the board, through the parent-teacher associations, and you yourselves, becoming a lot more forceful at the school system in terms of what they're feeding you.
Can I just chime in very quickly? First of all, Councilmember Irvin's exactly right, and she and I have worked closely on this for a number of years. On the issue that she raised about the Styrofoam polystyrene trays, I know that a lot of people in this room are environmentally conscious and interested in improving recycling rates, and polystyrene trays right now, the school system doesn't have a good way to recycle those. And I was asked, actually, to read this announcement, so I'm going to do it right now, and that is that this group that Councilmember Irvin referred to, that she and I and other council members have worked with, is called the Young Activist Club, and it's trying to create a network of students around the county. And I was asked to read this announcement. This is not necessarily an endorsement, but I have worked closely with them. Visit their website at www.youngactivistclub.org or friend it on Facebook. They're trying to increase awareness of the desirability of having recyclable materials in school lunches. The other real quick issue, of course, with improving the quality and the content of school lunches, obviously, as with everything, it's cost. Right now, a school lunch only costs a couple of bucks, so that if you want to make it comparable to something you might get at a fancy restaurant, it would increase the cost, and that might make it impossible for a lot of our young people to afford it. The school lunch program has to support itself. The economics of it are that we don't substantially subsidize it, because we want to put our budget, as Councilmember Elrich said earlier, into program and classroom size and other things. So there's, there's not a big margin for improvement, but having said that, this is one issue that the county council has really watched very carefully. We've had Marla Kaplan, who's the Nutrition Director at the school system, in front of our joint committee several times, and it's something we are very much aware of. And I also agree with Councilmember Irvin's suggestion. Work through your student school board member. That's a really powerful person who represents you and, and has access to all the decisions on this.
Okay. We're going to be out of time really soon, and I know there's still some hands that didn't get their questions asked, so I'm sure the council members will stay and talk to, to you afterwards if I don't get back to you. But we're going to go to this young lady now.
Hi, my name is Martha Sanchez, and I attend John F. Kennedy High School. I'm at school, I'm president of a club called Salto El Tudo. And what we do is that we, we take many different areas, and yeah, for example, tutoring, mentoring, and we provide these services to Latino students at my school. Everything from college preparation, ACT preparation, tutoring, visiting colleges, and including parent workshops monthly. So we have a group here that's addressing a huge problem, because we have many minorities who are just not graduating high school and not going on to college. However, it's very difficult for us to provide all of these things to our students when we cannot ask for school funding or public funding. What we have received is that that would open the gateway for more ethnic programs to ask for these fundings. But my, then my question is, when we're talking about closing the achievement gap, is how can we support schools which have high population of minority students who are first generation and simply not prepared for college?
It's President Navarro.
First of all, thank you so much for leading that effort in Kennedy High School. It is part of my district, and it is something that I've been working on very strongly. And, you know, I'm reminded, as I'm hearing the conversation in this room, that we have to be very careful about making sure that we have won Montgomery County. In our school system, we have students and families who can afford tutors, who can afford extracurricular activities, who can afford their own type of supports, and we have students who can't afford that, who rely on many of the services that the other agencies provide. And so we need to be very careful when we talk about funding, especially the funding that's going to the school system and the funding that is going to the other services in our county. Very important, because we're seeing it here in terms of what the needs are that are directly linked to academic achievement. So I would say to you that it's very important that we have this dialogue. There are grants that groups like yours can have access to. I don't subscribe to this notion of if you give one group, you know, that is doing great work, that somehow is going to open the floodgates. Well, we have an academic achievement gap. We have to make sure that all of our students are able to be prepared for 21st century, because guess what? Especially in the Latino community, in the year 2050, 120 million people in the United States will be Latino. And so the workforce piece of this for the Latino community, African-American students, it's huge. It's not just because it's the right thing to do, it's because the socioeconomic future of this country depends on that. So let's work together to explore some funding mechanisms. There are many, and this council is very committed to this question, but let's remember here in this room, we are one Montgomery, okay? And when we talk about limited dollars, let's remember that Health and Human Services, the Recreation Department, et cetera, they need to be funded as well, because that also ties into academic achievement, as we have discussed tonight. So I'll be glad to talk to you after this, to see how we can explore some options to help you, help your fellow and your peers, et cetera. This is something that the school system needs to get behind and will get behind as well. Thank you.
Well, we have had some excellent questions tonight. We're out of time for our live segment of the show, but I'm going to turn it over to Council President Roger Berliner for some closing thoughts, and thanks again to everybody for coming out.
Well, just very briefly, thank you, guys. We know you could have been doing lots of other things, and you chose to be here. You are engaged. And let me just say, we need you to stay engaged. We really need to hear from you. We need you to tell us, from your perspective, how we can make this county an even better place to live. So thank you all for being here.